Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for December 4th, 2018. We have three items on the closed session agenda. Madam Clerk.
Item one, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organization, service employees international union.
Any public comments on this item?
Good morning. Yes, I do have some public comments on this item. I'd like to remind you that the SEIU is just a labor negotia- a labor union and they really don't have too much political clout in Calaveras County. I believe that Michael Olivera was supported by them and endorsed, and they endorsed him, yet he didn't win, and I'm very sorry about that, by the way. So, and a lot of the unions that you see that donate to the supervisors' races, unless they donate huge amounts of money, like when they got Supervisor Walensky at one time elected, Walensky spent about $25 per vote to become Calaveras County Supervisor. So unless there's a huge amount of money involved in it, there's no need to give them too much heat as a political organization, and so you just have to be fair with them and not cowed out to them when it comes to things like this. These are the holidays, by the way, and holiday has a religious holy day meeting, and they were the original, the clergy was the original labor negotiator for the world, or as that was the only day that serfs could get off were holy days and Sunday. So remember that in this very festive time of the year.
Madam Clerk, item number two.
Item two, public employee discipline dismissal release pursuant to government code section 54957.
Any public comments?
Yes, it's really too bad that Tim resigned when he did. We could have had one of these for him, and basically, when it comes to a dismissal or a situation where you have to penalize somebody, he was due for it. I made a complaint regarding him that he didn't follow government process when it came to a refund that I had requested. Those refund, when there's no process in place, it has to go to the Board of Supervisors, and he did not do that. And I noticed that another person, Alberts, did the same thing, where he came to the county and asked for a dismissal of funds or something along those lines, and they said, "Well, this form has not been approved by county council." Well, at that point, county council can't actually make a determination, she can't get involved in it because it has to go through process. He could have made that request on toilet paper, two-ply, but, you know, you can't instigate a process after the fact. If there's no process in place, it has to go to the Board of Supervisors. You can't say, "Wait, we're going to get a process for you." It just doesn't work that way. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, item number three.
Public employment pursuant to government code section 54957B1, title county administrative officer.
Good morning. Again, yeah, the CIO position, I'm actually kind of sorry to see Tim go. You know, I thought I had a few more jibes to give the guy, but I'll get fresh meat now. And, you know, regardless of who you put, I don't have that much confidence in you folks when it comes to appointing county officials. The best thing you could do was, and I'm going to say this, but knowing that you're going to do the complete opposite because, I know, at a certain point, you know, development ceases, usually when people start drinking. But it, I put Manny Lopez, Manuel Lopez back as interim CIO. He, you know, I can talk to the man. I listen to him. I listen to him, you know. It's not a one-way street there. It's actually where I can actually have a conversation with him, and the majority of that conversation is me listening because I learn from him. And it's important that we hire people that are smarter than us. I always do. I do not, hiring somebody that I can intimidate, hiring somebody that is feeble-minded or, not you, Tim, or is easily a pushover, does me no good. It doesn't put money in my pocket. It doesn't better my situation in life. And it's the same for the county. It's not going to better the people of Calaveras County's lot in life by having somebody that you can always just tell what to do. You have to have somebody that can work, that is strong, and that can handle each of you, not only individually, but fairly and equally, because sometimes we have supervisors that go in and start pushing, you know, the pointed heads around. And I don't want to see that in a CIO this time. I want a CIO that's fair with you folks, that, you know, there's no underhanded games going on. I just can't stand that when that happens. It erodes the confidence that the public has in you as a board. So somebody strong, and don't go with Brent again. Brent's a nice guy, but, you know, it's time to move on. Very nice man, but time to move on, or any of the other former CAOs. I just don't, unless it was, unless it was Tom Mitchell, who I really liked as a CIO until he got forced out by the Walensky and his gang. Thank you.
Any other public comments? If none, CIO, let's, you have a comment you want to make before we go to the closed session?
Yes, I do, thank you. In recognizing that item number three on the agenda today, I just wanted to read into the record the letter that I had sent to the Board on November 21st. The letter reads, "Dear Chairman Toffanelli and members of the Board, it is with mixed emotion that I announce that I have taken a position with Tulare County. Deciding to leave Calaveras was a very difficult decision to make, but I feel that this opportunity would afford me the ability to spend a little more time with my children when they are still at a critical point in their development. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the Board for their support over these last couple of years. Making the decision to leave was most assuredly one of the most difficult I've made, but also I feel it is the right one. I am confident that the changes that I have brought to the county administrative office and the reorganization of functions will continue to serve Calaveras County well. I also feel that I am leaving having accomplished or laid a strong foundation for many of the projects that I initially set out to do. The county now has a strong momentum to finish the public infrastructure rebuilding after the Butte fire in 2017 winter storms. The county's budgeting and purchasing process have been vastly improved and will continue to evolve. Integrated waste program and historical notice of violations and compliance issues are being completely resolved, and the capital improvement plans have been updated to reflect current project needs. It is with some sadness that I will not be able to see all projects through to completion, but I am confident in staff to complete them. I anticipate my final day with the county to be January 1st, though I will be around that week should I need to remain around to help in the transition. I again want to thank the Board for their support. Sincerely, Timothy Lutz."
So does that mean you'll be working January 1st?
Do you need me to work January 1st?
I don't know yet. We'll find out on December 31st.
Okay.
All right. With that being said, we will go to closed session. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for December 4th, 2018. Please rise if you can for the pledge. Madam Clerk, can you please lead us?
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you please read out from the closed sessions, please?
Report of today's closed sessions. Item one, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, conference with county designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding employee organization, service employees international union. There was no reportable action taken. Item two, public employee discipline dismissal release pursuant to government code section 54957, there was no reportable action taken. Item three, public employment pursuant to government code section 54957B1, title county administrative officer. On a motion by Supervisor Guaramendi and a second by Supervisor Clapp, the Board previously received and accepts the letter of resignation from Timothy Lutz. The Board directed staff to negotiate an interim contract with Manuel Lopez. The contract and a resolution will come forward on the December 18th meeting for consideration to assist in the transition period.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more.
Yeah, one more.
I have one more announcement, sorry. The meeting of the Board of Supervisors meeting, ugh, sorry, the meeting of the Board of Supervisors scheduled for Tuesday, December 11th, 2018, has been canceled.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on agenda, which is announcements.
This is a time for Board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any Board member have an announcement? Supervisor Mills, your light's on.
As everyone is aware of the passing of the 41st President, I would like to ask for a moment of silence and respect.
Hold the moment of silence for former President Bush.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other announcement by Board members? Any staff members, any announcements? Sheriff.
Good morning. How's everybody doing today?
Very well, thank you.
Well, thank you. You always ask us to speak up, so I'm asking you to speak up.
Yeah, and now that you're here, we're doing very well.
There you go, good. I just want to let the public know and the Board know what the Sheriff's Office did and what the search and rescue program for Calaveras County did for the Butte fire, or excuse me, the car fire victims. We ended up sending seven deputies up there. They were up there for four days assisting with the evacuations. Search and rescue, we sent 15 personnel up there. They were up there for eight days and they put in 817 hours while they were there. Calaveras County total number of persons we sent up there was 22, and the total hours was 1,264 hours. So I just want to say that this little county did a lot for those folks, and I appreciate my folks and the search and rescue people. I just wanted to say thank you so much.
On behalf of the Board, I would like to thank you and your crew for going up there and doing what you did.
Absolutely.
HR Director Judy Hawkins.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And I would like to let our county employees and the public know that on Saturday President Trump announced Wednesday, December 5th, a national day of mourning, and many counties within our state is recognizing that day as a holiday. And so pursuant to our government code, the county, Calaveras County, will be recognizing December 5th as a holiday, and so our offices will be closed.
Thank you for that announcement.
Thank you.
Any other staff member announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. General public comments. Madam Clerk.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move forward with the next item of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Carl?
Thank you very much. Good morning to the Board of Supervisors and the County of Calaveras. I came here to get a burn permit today, $12, well spent. It just happened to be up tomorrow, so I decided, well, let's kill two birds with one stone, but there's no violence going to take place here today. I think it's very, very telling that recently, the recent outcome of the potential litigation regarding PG&E and the settlement you reached with mediation of only $25 million. Now, if you had moved on this a year earlier, if you had actually paid attention to what was going on in this county, you were looking at between $60 and $80 million that potentially you could have gotten, or you would have had a more favorable outcome. Usually when you go into mediation, you can expect half of what, you asked for $169 million? $169 million? Half of that, I believe, was punitive damages, damages not to do this again. You, you, the Board of Supervisors and County Council, if you took that away and just cut it in half, say, you're still talking about, you know, usually you would get $40 million. But you came back to us, you came back to us with $20 million after attorneys, $20 million. Well, the way I see it, you owe us about, you know, $47 million, this Board. You owe us in services $47 million. I'd say that that's, what, a little over $8 million per supervisor. I hold you personally responsible. I want you guys to give a check, each of you, a check for over $8 million. Can you do that? No? You can't do that, can you? You're not good supervisors, at all. And that's not a good County Council for not bringing it up. I had to bring it up earlier this year for you guys to take action. You should have done this last year, should have filed last year. I'm very upset with you folks. And with that, I'd like to wish you a happy holidays to you and your family, and I'm going to leave here.
I live in Murfrees, California, and I attend Avery Middle School. I have an award here for Deputy Joel Burnett. May you please come up? This award is for outstanding service and for contribution to the Calaveras County Law Enforcement Lip Sync Challenge. Congratulations. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Eden England, and I go to AV, I go to AV Middle School and I live in Arnold. I have an award here for Corporal Nicole Riviere. Will you please come up? This award is presented to Corporal Nicole Riviere for directing the Calisveri County Lip Sync Competition 2018.
Thank you.
Oh, that's pretty nice.
Hi, my name is Olin Salazar, and I live in Arnold, and I attend Avery Middle School. I'm here to present an award to Sheriff Rick DiBasilio. Will he please come up? The award says Outstanding Service Award Presented to Sheriff Rick DiBasilio in appreciation for his contribution to the Calaveras County Law Enforcement Lip Sync Challenge 2018.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we have one more.
This award is for Ed Lark. Will he please come up?
I did a failed imitation of Ed today. It's not a case of...
This award says Outstanding Service Award Presented to Ed Lark, producer and videographer for the Outstanding Calaveras County Law Enforcement Lip Sync Challenge Video 2018.
All right. Yeah, you can go tell. Hold on a second, and I'm not going to count this as part of the 30-minute public comment period because it was a board ceremony, so we'll expand that time to allow people to speak. But she wants to get a photo op. Come on up. Come on, all the way up here. Come on forward, right up here.
Mr. Chair.
Good deal, good job.
Mr. Chair, seeing this is not public comment, I'd like to further recognize someone's very instrumental in making this event happen, and that's Alice Montgomery. She's in our gallery right now. For those folks who don't know, she actually corrugated, she actually put together this whole project on the dance routines and things with the children, also did it for our Christmas fair, so I think a hand of applause for her.
There we go. Yeah, Alice, come on, Alice. Come on, Alice. Come over here, bye. Don't get behind the flowers, so. Okay, ready? One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, back to public comment.
Okay, all right. My name is Alan Hagedorn, I'm from Balacito. I'd like to discuss a little bit, or at least update the Board on the fact that we have some issues in process, I believe, at the assessor's office. And what I'm talking about is that in the default position for an assessment, evaluation of property normally in every county I've ever been in is the last sales price, and it should be pretty simple to just update the county records and the appraisal based on that last sale of the property. And I believe it says something about being, if it's a distressed sale, that's a little different, you maybe have to do something else, but normal sales should, you should just update the rolls. Well, in my particular case, it's been, it'll be over two years before I actually get the first appraisal of the property. And in my case, it happened to go the wrong way, and at least from my standpoint, not from your standpoint, because it's revenue that you're not getting, but in my particular case, I will be paying approximately $13,000 more than the property value is worth because I'll be paying two years at the old rate before they get around to appraising the property. So I would think this is something that could be easily fixed by the Board of Supervisors to direct the Calaveras County Assessor to use the sell price of the properties as the new valuation, and they could do that in five minutes. I've gone through many appeals. I'm sure that takes time. I understand they're behind, and this could really help them out. Thank you.
Good morning, folks. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I have two issues I'd like to present today, maybe with some assistance from you. Several years ago, at an IHSS meeting, it was brought to our attention that we're a health-oriented committee, and there are people that are allergic to perfume. So we had instituted something on our agenda that said, "In consideration for those with environmental sensitivities, please refrain from wearing scented products to our meetings." And we accommodated those persons that had an objection to hairspray, whatever. Recently, we're struggling with having someone in our committee who has a very serious health condition, asthma, and is extremely sensitive to animals. Two meetings ago, she came into our meeting room and had to leave the room and go into the halls. Fortunately, we were at the hospital. She had an asthma attack because people insist on bringing their animals, not service animals, to meetings. They're called comfort animals, or companion animals, or something like that. They're serving a serious threat to some of our, the health of some of our attendees. I'm asking, would it be appropriate for us to request people leave their animals at home? We could say something like, "In consideration for people with serious health conditions, please refrain from bringing your pets to our meetings." I'm asking you this because I've been searching for at least two years to find out how we can avoid subjecting this person to another asthma attack. My next issue is, I hope you all had a nice holiday with family and friends. I'd like to remind you that there are hundreds, maybe thousands, of children who have been separated from their families, thanks to the Trump administration. They're not able to spend time, the holidays, with their family. They're in institutions similar to orphanages and are suffering at this point. Some of them are being sexually abused by other kids in the shelters. I read that one staff person has been removed because of sexual abuse. So as we're all enjoying the holidays with our family, friends, loved ones, I'd like us all to remember there are people that are deprived.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning. I'd like to make a request of the Chair that you extend an invitation to the Sheriff and to the head of the Building Department to be here for Agenda Number 19. I know that the Sheriff is already here, and that's his item, but if you could do that, we might have some questions. I just wanted to give you a heads up and ask if that's possible. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, Board. Hope you all had a good Thanksgiving, and I'd just like to acknowledge Tim Lutz leaving and resigning to return to Larry. It's been quite the salary you've collected since you've been in your position, and I believe you have a significant amount of work left to do, or maybe it's not. I understand as far as I've, all my discussions with department heads, that the Nexus Study has been delivered to your desk. So I would ask that, taking into consideration how much we have all paid for you to work on our behalf, that you finish your work before you leave and deliver the Nexus Study. There is, as we all know, $940,000 that the county is still holding on to and not willing to return for the job that has been completed. The program's over, and it's time that you release that study before you leave out the back door. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good morning, George Frye. Tim, I'm really sad that you're leaving, really sad. You know, we tried to get young people here who are really sharp, and you came along, and you've done a hell of a job in the short period of time you've been here. So I, for one, I'm really sad about that. We're not keeping young people. We're not keeping young people here, and it's a sad commentary. I know you have your reasons for why you're leaving, but I suspect I know what they are. This has been a tumultuous year for this Board of Supervisors. I hope come January, we have a new chair who has their act together. But once again, via pandias.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any board member wish to remove the consent agenda item?
Yes, Chair Number Six and Number Eleven.
Number Six and Number Eleven. Any other board member? Any staff member? Any member of the public?
Number Seven, Number Eight, Number Eleven.
Eleven's already been pulled. All right, looking for a motion for the remainder.
So moved.
A motion by Supervisor Clapp.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. Any further comments? If not, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero. I will give you one moment.
Item Six is from Environmental Health. To authorize the submittal of a local government waste tire enforcement grant application to CalRecycle for fiscal year 2018-19 through fiscal year 2022 through 2023. Authorize the board chair to sign and execute annual grant agreements, and authorize the Environmental Health Director to sign subsequent grant amendments and requests for payment.
Supervisor Mills, you pulled this item.
Yes, Chair. The only point that I would like to make is that since the recycling coordinator is being run through Integrated Waste and Brian Moss, would it not in the future make better sense to move this grant application and the processing for it over to the Integrated Waste portion of our administrative department, current administrative department? It just seems to make better sense there than it would be right now sitting in Environmental Health. Not that we need to make that decision today, but I would like to be sure that we have that conversation in the future discussions.
Yeah, I think that's a, actually, a good question to go in and explore. Sometimes there are certain funds from the state level that flow specifically toward an environmental management agency, so it might not be possible to do that.
I did the exploration, and yes, it is possible.
Yeah, but it would be worth, yeah, exploring for sure.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? If not, I'll bring it to the board.
With this, I will move the item.
I have a motion by Supervisor Mills. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. Any other comments? If not, I'll put a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero. Item Number Seven, Madam Clerk.
Item Seven is from Public Health Services. To authorize the board chair to sign Grant Agreement Number Sixteen-Dash-One-Zero-One-Three-Two, Amendment One, with the California Department of Public Health for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Education, SNAP, for the period of October 1, 2016, through September 30, 2019, to increase grant funding in the amount of $34,043 for a total amount of $415,841 in revenue for the grant item.
Ms. Newman, you pulled this item.
Yes, sir. I had several questions. The increase, is that coming out of the general fund, or is it coming from the state? And how much of this total amount is spent on education? How much is spent on administration, and then how much is actually services? And I'm assuming these are food stamps. This is the food stamp program now. It's called SNAP?
Kristin will answer your questions.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kristin Brink's Health and Human Services. This is a revenue contract, meaning it is revenue coming in to provide nutrition education services as part of the SNAP Ed program, which is not the same thing as CalFresh, or formerly known as food stamps. It is delivered out of the Public Health Department. It is a nutrition education program. It is for our staffing and for the materials, for our nutrition educators to go out into the local schools, into the communities, and they do deliver evidence-based nutrition education. The administration amount, I don't know that off of the top of my head, but it's not, the bulk of the money is for our staffing who provides those services. And I believe I answered all of Ms. Newman's questions.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Olivera. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Guerra Mendy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero. Moving on to item number eight.
Public Health Services. To authorize the board chair to execute an amendment to a memorandum of understanding with Tuolumne County and Dr. Dean Colada for the provision of reciprocal temporary health officer coverage effective July 1, 2018, and remaining in effect until Dr. Dean Colada's contract with Calaveras County expires.
Ms. Newman?
Sir. Just reading this, I had some questions because it doesn't, I'm trying to understand what Tuolumne County has to do with Calaveras and Dr. Dean Colada. When does his contract end? And what steps are being taken to take care of this when it does end? Because to me, it says a reciprocal, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Good morning. Kristin Brink's Health and Human Services. This is a reciprocal contract in the terms of if Dr. Colada is unavailable, maybe he's out of the county or unavailable to provide health officer coverage. This is an agreement with Tuolumne County where their health officer will provide reciprocal coverage. It is not, is a non-financial agreement. It's kind of memorializing a backup plan in the event that either one is not available. So Dr. Colada would provide coverage in the case of the Tuolumne County Health Officer not being available. This is very, very common practice throughout the entire state. Fellow counties work with each other to provide coverage since there typically is a singular health officer, particularly in the smaller counties. Dr. Colada does have a contract to provide health officer coverage, and so I believe those are all of her questions.
It expires June?
He has a contract that goes through the remainder of this year, and we have had a contract with him for a number of years to provide this health officer coverage.
Do you mean end of December?
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year. It is on the.
June 30.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Olivera.
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero. We'll move on to item number eleven. Madam Clerk.
Item Eleven is from the Administrative Office. To authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to Folsom Lake Ford in the amount of $137,200 plus applicable sales tax and fees for the acquisition of four Ford F-150 police responder trucks for the sheriff's office.
Supervisor Mills, you pulled this item.
Well, actually, I would defer to Bonnie and let her get her questions answered first, if that's okay.
Okay.
Very short and simple. Is this money coming out of the general fund, or has a grant been secured somewhere else?
Is that your question?
No, sir.
So why don't we, you have questions or items you want to speak up?
Well, yes, I think.
Before the sheriff comes up and answers.
And I would like to just speak to the larger issue of this is a budgeted item. These are budgeted items. And so the purchasing authority, in essence, has already been created by the budget for us to have, I would look to, again, to CIO Lutz. Oh, okay, Bonnie's coming up, is to develop some type of a policy where we don't have to go through this, you know, multiple bid process that we can simply attach or piggyback onto existing bulk purchases with other agencies, which we do with other items. But if we could simply come back in a future point and have a discussion on a policy surrounding this so that these, what I call, daily activities, don't have to come back before the board. We've already made the approvals. It's just a matter of now go forth and do. And I think that would solve a lot of the constant noise that comes through our board. If there's a reason for us to ask a question, we certainly can do that. But I would definitely like to see a more robust policy surrounding purchasing, purchasing agent authorities, et cetera, in relation to the overall budget, where we've already made the approvals.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bonnie Rich Administration. And I agree on many levels, Supervisor Mills. It's a common misconception, however, that, and we can address it when we approach revising the procurement ordinance, the purchasing ordinance, but it's a common misconception that just because the board approves the funding for a capital asset, there is still a procurement process that has to go forward. And simply based on our current authority limitations, that award has to be made by the governing body, i.e. this Board of Supervisors. So noted, and the purchasing ordinance is the next big project on my list. So we will definitely take that into consideration, and I appreciate your insight on that. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Oh, and one more thing. Sorry. The reason, although it's in the staff report, yes, the board did already authorize us to piggyback on state contracts for the purchase of vehicles, and we have that authority through 2020 or any extended term by the state. However, these Ford F-150 police responders are a new vehicle. The state has not competitively bid them. I have asked the sheriff's office to obtain three informal quotes. They did that. Folsom Lake Ford came in the lowest. That's why this item is before you today.
And to your point is that it's because of those authority limits.
Correct.
It's creating our issue here, and that's why I would like to have a more complete discussion on those, on the process by which we hit those limits, and then what do we do from that point?
We will be back after the first of the year to work with the board on those matters.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Captain Ballard, you had additional information? You were speaking.
And you got the gun to do it.
I didn't hear a call for backup. It was Bonnie. Your question is where the money was coming from, general fund or not, and I'll leave that up to CIO. It was budgeted in their budget, though, so, CIO.
Yes, for clarity, these funds are general funded purchases. They were budgeted for, so the differentiation would be it doesn't change the draw from contingency or anything else. This was submitted with the sheriff department's budget that was approved by the board. So they approved the fixed asset purchase. This is basically now going to that next step, which is actually getting the bids done and receiving authorization to actually make the purchase.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions. Captain Ballard, could I have you adjust the podium, please? Now, these pickups, are they, I understand this might be the trend in law enforcement now due to cost.
I think so, and specifically for, like, rural areas and us. The police responder being a vehicle, off-road, those types of things is what we need.
And these are four-wheel drive?
Yes, they are.
$37,400 each?
Correct, and.
It's a heck of a price.
Yeah, and like Bonnie was saying, this, you know, they finally got approved through CHP to be pursuit rated, too. So that's an important thing for us.
Very important. Are these, these vehicles, when we receive their actual items, they have to be outfitted, correct?
Correct.
All right. So basically, and not in exact numbers, what's the cost savings between a police SUV-type vehicle that we've been purchasing, or even the sedans we've been purchasing? What's the cost savings on going to these pickups?
I just went through getting two interceptors, too, and it's about equivalent. You know, going through Folsom, doing the bid, or off the state contract, it's pretty good. It's far superior than shopping off the parking lot.
So it's a good deal?
Very good deal, yes.
What's your expected life of these pickups?
If I'm driving it, or if somebody else is driving it.
Well, I know your driving record, Eddie, so.
Well, I'm hoping they're going to last a long time. But, you know, the year of service of a vehicle, you know, should always be determined, obviously, through our sheriff's department policy at a certain amount of miles.
I understand.
You know, and I think we're trying to stick around 150,000 miles, so about 150,000 miles.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Are these V eights?
Uh, Sheriff, are they V eights?
No, they're V sixes.
V sixes.
Looking at the specs, they are the V sixes.
Supervisor Mills?
Just additionally, Sheriff, I know we talked about the idea of the pickups last year, early last year, of saying that might be an alternative. I just want it clearly understood that we need to be rotating these vehicles in as a bulk of four or five every year. We're not going to be purchasing a large amount of vehicles and have them grow old altogether at the same time. We have to be in a constant replacement mode. So hopefully, the staff is looking at that and understands that fleet dynamic. And you may even find that the tires that they're coming with that vehicle might not be appropriate for the kind of terrain that you're going to work in. So you'll be able to see that as you move along.
Well, that's one of the new assignments that the sheriff tasked me with, and hopefully, we'll be doing five in, five out every year. That's the safest thing to do for our fleet, or maybe more than that. And hopefully, we'll catch up. We did start that process many, many years ago, but then a recession came, and we haven't bought any cars for five years. So hopefully, we'll do five in and five out and get back to where we need to be.
Which brings me to my comment. Four vehicles, five districts.
It doesn't snow in Valley Springs.
Thank you, Captain Ballard. So, that being said.
I will move the item, Chair.
Supervisor Mills, will they motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero. We will take a ten-minute break before we go into the regular agenda. All right, we're back from break. We're moving on to the regular agenda. Item Number Seventeen. Madam Clerk.
Item Seventeen is from Human Services to receive a presentation from the Calaveras County Homeless Task Force.
Kristin?
Hello.
This is your presentation? Well, I think there's several of you going, there you go. You were on, now you're off?
Sorry.
You're on now.
Okay.
You're on, you're off, you're on, you're off.
Very much. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kristin Brink's Health and Human Services. But today, I sit up here as a member of the Calaveras County Homeless Task Force and before you, bringing an update to your board and to the community on the work that the task force has been doing over the course of the last handful of months. So a little bit of background on the Calaveras County Homeless Task Force. The purpose is to share existing resources, as well as identify and develop solutions and resources for gaps that are identified community-wide. We've been meeting since about May 1, 2018. At the beginning, we met approximately every month and a half. But since the governor's budget was released with a number of one-time initiatives and one-time fundings to address homelessness statewide in all counties, we've been meeting monthly and have recently formed a subcommittee to work through kind of the more logistics and nitty-gritty details. So what causes homelessness? Homelessness is a very complex, multifaceted issue that is affected by loss of employment, mental, physical, or mental illness, drugs or alcohol, lack of affordable housing, a multitude of options. And what we're trying to communicate to everyone is that it does not affect just one single entity. It is not just in Health and Human Services. It is not just in law enforcement. It is a community-wide issue that communities are responsible for. it is a community-wide issue that communities are responsible for addressing. And so, again, this is the reason why the Task Force itself is composed of such a diverse So, as you can see, these are the members that are regularly invited to the Task Force. I actually have a number of colleagues here today, so if you're an active member of, or even a little less active, of the Calaveras County Homeless Task Force, can you please stand up, just so everybody can see? Got quite a few people here today. So, business communities, city partners, county administrative offices, excuse me, the county departments, we have department heads from planning and building and sheriff's probation, et cetera, employment training providers, healthcare, Office of Education, and even the U.S. Forest Service. Okay, so going into the Calaveras County data, we're gonna hear from Jerry and Denise.
Jerry Kadot from Sierra Hope in Angels Camp, and I also work, am part of the Continuum of Care, which oversees the point-in-time count. This particular screen needs a little bit of an explanation. You'll notice the difference between the two thousand and sixteen and the two thousand and seventeen point-in-time count. So, every continuum of care in the United States is required by HUD to conduct a one-night point-in-time count of homeless people in their area on one night during the last ten days of January. Not the best time to do it, but that's, we're kinda stuck with that. So, two thousand and sixteen are, was the year after the Butte Fire, and so there was a lot of concern in Calaveras County for people who'd been displaced and become homeless. And so, there was a lot of attention placed on it. We had a much higher level of involvement from volunteers, county agencies, nonprofit organizations to conduct the count that year. And our point-in-time count is only as good as our ability to mobilize volunteers to conduct it. I would say that the two thousand and sixteen point-in-time count is probably the most accurate count we've ever done in Calaveras County. And so, of those two hundred and twenty-one people, two hundred and ten were unsheltered, which means they were living on the street or in cars, et cetera. We counted another hundred and fifty-seven who were couch surfing, staying with friends, temporarily staying with friends or family, sleeping on somebody's couch. We're not allowed to report couch surfing numbers to HUD. They don't consider that homeless, but we all know that that's how a lot of people find shelter, particularly with the lack of services. In two thousand and seventeen, we had a very poor effort, mobilization effort that year, unfortunately. And so, with the help of the Task Force, we're really stepping that up this year, and I think we're gonna have a good count again this year. The importance of the point-in-time count is that a lot of the funding that's coming down, particularly some of the state funding that has just come down, is based on the numbers that we report to HUD. So, it's really important that we get as accurate a count as possible, do the best job we can. As far as the available beds, you see twenty-three emergency shelter beds. I wanna point out that those beds belong to the Resource Connections Crisis Center Emergency Shelter, so those beds are all dedicated to victims of domestic violence and are not available to the general homeless population. Of the thirteen transitional housing beds that are shown there, five of them were part of a Resource Connection Transitional Housing Program for Victims of Domestic Violence. Those beds are no longer available, that they lost, they discontinued that program. I think the funding was gone for that. Eight, the other eight beds were also for a program that funding is no longer available for. That was also operated by the Resource Connection, and that was for people in the AB-109 program, eight transitional housing beds. So, those are no longer available. This data numbers, I think, were from twenty sixteen or seventeen, but they're, they're no longer available. I believe that Behavioral Health has some new transitional housing programs of some beds, you know?
Yes, we have five as part of the Supportive Housing Component that is called, known as the Vision House, for those that are severely mentally ill and engaged in their recovery plans.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes.
How many beds are allocated for our veterans?
So, because all of these beds right now are dedicated to victims of domestic violence, we don't have any funded beds that, in Calaveras County, that are dedicated to veterans. Other counties have BASH vouchers, which are Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing vouchers. We have some projects that we're hoping to develop in the coming months that may bring some BASH vouchers to Calaveras County as well.
Do we have any participation by Veteran Affairs on a federal level for your programs?
Veterans Affairs is a partner with HUD in many of the homeless programs. We have some local agencies working primarily in Amador County, and Denise is with ATCA, and they have a apartment building there that is dedicated to veterans, so we're hoping to bring some of that to Calaveras as well.
Okay, how many units do we have in that apartment building? Do we know?
Twelve units, or thirty-one beds. It's the previous Health and Human Services building in Amador County.
Thank you.
Supervisor Mills, question?
Oh, no, sorry.
Good morning, Denise Cloward. I work for the Amador-Tawalomee Community Action Agency. I am the Housing Director, and for two thousand and eighteen, I'm also the Lead Chairman for the Central Sierra Continuum of Care. As Ms. Brinkes was explaining, the Homeless Task Force here in Calaveras County, that's been moving strongly in the last six months, are also part of the Central Sierra Continuum of Care. Calaveras County Homeless Task Force works in collaboration with the COC, or we are CA-526. Our region consists of Amador, Calaveras, Mariposa, and Tawalomee Counties. We meet monthly to promote community-wide commitment to the goal of ending homelessness. It provides funding for efforts by nonprofit providers, state, local governments to quickly rehouse homeless individuals and families to minimize trauma and dislocation, promotes access to effective utilization and mainstream programs, and optimizes self-sufficiency among individuals and families experiencing homelessness. So, just briefly, in ninety-five, HUD, or Housing and Urban Development, began to require communities to submit a single application for McKinney-Ventil homeless assistance grants in order to streamline the funding application process and encourage coordination of housing service providers on a local level and promote the development of the Continuum of Cares, or COCs. By requiring communities to submit single applications, HUD hoped to encourage a more structural and strategic approach to both housing and providing services to homeless people. Our COC, we work on a, a community-wide strategic plan. We are recognized by HUD and HCD, or Housing Community Development, as this particular region, so we are, we are all together in the funding source, if you will, as a balance of state. Yep.
I'm Leigh Kimble with Behavioral Health, and in all these new grants coming out, we were looking to kinda go deep and wide to get more information, so I'm gonna try to breathe some life into the numbers that are right here. So, you can see in two thousand and sixteen, the U.S. Census data reports fifty-three thousand five hundred and two dollars as the median income. Now, that's kind of just dry, but you have to think of HUD defines affordable housing as thirty percent of your income, no more than that, to be affordable. At this rate, and that includes your utilities, that would be one thousand and seventy dollars that you could afford for, for your rent or your mortgage and tax. Thirty-one percent of our community live below thirty-five thousand, and at that rate, seven hundred and forty-five, including your utilities, is what rent would be. You can see here that the U.S. Census shows that females are still making less than men by considerable for the median income, and we have twelve percent in two thousand and sixteen living below the federal poverty. The median-priced house in two thousand and sixteen would take that seventy-five thousand dollars to be able to afford it at an affordable rate at thirty thousand. And that's coming, those, that all that data is coming from the U.S. Census, as well as the American Community Survey that the U.S. Census data provides. So, we went looking to find out, well, how deep is the problem? How many people? What's, where can we get some information? Who are the homeless? And using what the county collects itself on Medi-Cal and CalWorks, those that declared themselves as homeless in twelve months, from September two thousand and seventeen to September two thousand and eighteen, we had nine hundred and ninety-two, but there was some duplication because it was counting two services. There were eight hundred and nineteen unduplicated individuals, and you can see the demographics there. The story that's not told in those demographics is the percentage of increase. So, I, once I got the data for the first year, I went back five years, and there's been thirty-five percent increase in homelessness self-reporting in these two programs. That made me ask what's caused that. And when I went and asked folks, a lot of folks said the Butte Fire. The Butte Fire year was a ten percent increase, but the two years prior to that had, had twelve and fourteen percent. This last year only had eight percent increase. And so, I wanted to know what was causing that, so we were digging a little bit deeper. If you look at what HUD reported to Congress in two thousand and seventeen, California has the worst homelessness population in the United States. We have forty-seven percent above the national average for our housing costs, and eighteen, only eighteen percent above national average for our income. That's all over California. But we have an extra level of problem in Calaveras, and that's our proximity to the Bay Area and the Silicon Valley. So, even though they make more money there, their housing also is more. And if you look at what the affordable housing rate there is, they really can't afford housing. So, guess what? Commutable distance to the Central Valley, where it was affordable. And in two thousand and sixteen, went from nine hundred and four average for a two-bedroom apartment to sixteen hundred because of this exodus. Then guess what happens to the folks who are Central Valley? They look at what's commutable, and they're gonna be coming into our area because we're now within, if they make more money, they can afford the housing here. There was another really surprising thing I discovered, and that's that there are seven, a little over seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand households in the county with twenty-eight thousand one hundred and four housing units. So, that doesn't say that there's a problem, but thirty-two percent of those houses are not available for rent or purchase. And we do have some beautiful areas for vacation homes and second homes. But going back to those two years with the greatest increase in homelessness, they were the two years that the housing market started to rebound in the Bay Area, but Calaveras' housing market had not started to rebound. So, there are probably investment properties being held, not for rent and not for purchase, until the housing market here rebounds, and then people will make some money off of it. The Butte Fire contributed ten percent, and this last year, we had eight percent increase in homelessness. Just so that you have an idea for fair market value, what causes people not being able to find their own housing, the fair market value for a two-bedroom home is, hold on a second, in, in the Bay Area is three thousand one hundred and twenty-one, and sixteen hundred in the Central Valley. So, that should give you an idea of where we're at on that. Any questions?
Continuing that conversation, we, I know Kristin, you and I had talked about this, about the thirty-two percent number, and that it does have to be accounted for, the number of second homes that are in the Arnold area, as, as well as in Copperopolis, is, it's a substantial number of that percentage is taken up with those second homes. We can see that in the voter rolls, we can see that in many other pieces, that those people don't live there, they just have a second home.
Yes, and by all means, we are by, the Homeless Task Force isn't necessarily saying that, we aren't saying that's an issue. We're just making the data and our hypotheses available to your Board to kinda grapple with, that this is not, you can't just look at a piece of data and say, oh, we're, like Leigh was pointing out earlier, there's sufficient units, there's more to the story. And that's what we're trying to bring before your Board today, is to just kinda mull over what some of those potential issues and strategies for addressing them could be.
Well, as Leigh pointed out, this is not unique to Calaveras County, so of course, the state legislature has gotten involved and has mandated that every city and county in the state have a housing element. It's a mandated part of the general plan, and it's intended to, you know, look at housing policy throughout the state and each individual region, and look at ways to provide for affordable housing for all ranges of income levels in, in the county. Our current housing element was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. We're in the process of updating it. We're required by state law to update it every five years, so we're in the process of expect to be done next, next summer. There are a number of goals and policies that address how, you know, the broad range of housing, but specifically homelessness. And again, they're, they're intended to look at means that the county can help in reducing barriers to housing and to look at programs that we can do to assist in providing affordability. This has been a huge challenge for the state. Many of the Bay Area jurisdictions, you know, are really grappling with this, and the state legislature keeps trying to come up with new schemes and new measures to, to address it. I'm not sure that government regulation is the way to go, but that seems to be, to be the way the legislature is making these more and more of a mandate. But regardless of that, we are trying to address the homelessness through several different policies and programs. Up on the screen, there are a couple of, if you go back to the other slide, specific goals that try to address the housing needs, and with, among those goals are, you know, to accommodate the housing requirements, and specifically those with special needs. And homelessness is considered a special need housing category. So, the next one. So, we have the goals, we have the policies, and there are a number of policies, I won't, you know, there's just some of the examples of them that we're looking at. And so, we look at all the different programs that are available, you know, as Chris had mentioned, there are state federally funded programs that we work with. We're very active in trying to pursue as much resources as we can to provide that housing. But then we need to look at, what, what can we do locally? You know, have we zoned sufficient land available for, for housing? Do we provide for shelters for, for people? We recently amended our zoning code to allow for emergency shelters, which we didn't have any, any capability of previously. And so, there's a number of things that the county can do, and that we're, we really, you know, need to be, be considering that as we look at different land use policies and decisions that we make. Again, many of these things are, are run by various grant programs or ongoing programs that we look at. We just need to make sure that, that we have the resources to keep up with the, the financial resources that are available, that if we don't apply for those, we lose out, and then we end up having to foot the bill ourselves. So, one of the things that we have, implementation measure eight seven A, is looking at trying to develop a housing coordinator. We don't have that position right now. It's something that Chris and I are looking at, trying to figure out a way to fund that in the future. But having someone who's dedicated to looking at different housing programs to make sure that the reporting is done appropriately, and looking at opportunities, is something that we are trying to consider in, in the future. But now, there's, another important policy that we have is to distribute affordable housing throughout the county. We don't wanna have all of the resources put in one location because homelessness and other housing shortages are not just, you know, limited to one community. It's, it's a county-wide concern, and so we really need to look at, you know, how do we provide housing options throughout the county? provide housing options throughout the county? And so those, just some of the issues that we're, we're dealing with, Chris and I are working very closely together to try to facilitate a variety of different programs. But we've been, you know, looking at a couple of, of projects and Chris will be talking more about this further on in this presentation, about specific locations and development of homeless, of homeless shelters throughout the county.
Okay, so talking about funding opportunities, right after, shortly after the Homeless Task Force began meeting, and as you know through the California State Association of Counties, the governor and the legislature provided off several fund, new funding opportunities for counties to assist in addressing homelessness for the federal fiscal year, excuse me, state fiscal year 2018, 19. All of these were one-time fundings. And so as counties, we're all trying to identify ways that we can utilize these one-term fundings to do two, one of two, or two things. One, address issues that we have and, and develop additional solutions, but then also prove our effectiveness with these funding to the state legislature so that they can understand that these have been a wise investment of funds. So given this task force had been up and kind of the relationships had been developing, what we decided is to utilize that venue as a way to, since it's got such a comprehensive group of individuals and it's got really good representation, that would be the venue that we utilize to develop proposals for these funding opportunities for Calaveras County. So just taking you through, the, there are a number, you're going to see three pages of different types of one-time funding sources that have come down, and a couple of other existing ones. They're all at different levels of implementation, they all have different target populations, they all have different rules and requirements, and they all have different state agencies administering them. So many of us in the counties are trying to navigate right now how we understand each one of those and how we develop proposals that are responsive. And on top of that, the state's also trying to navigate how they administer these. And so it's, it is a complex issue, but we're all doing our very best to move through it. So taking you through, and as I mentioned, some of these don't have any state direction out yet at all. So we have the Homeless Youth Exploitation Program, Housing for Health in California, CalWorks Housing Support Program, this is a program that has been in existence for a couple of years. Health and Human Services works in partnership with ATCA, Amateur, To Waloney Community Action Agency to administer housing support program, which is to, which is permanent supportive housing as well as some emergency assistance for individual, for families who are recipients of CalWorks. We've had this program operational for a few years now. CalWorks Homelessness Assistance Program, they're the, for families who receive CalWorks, the homelessness amount per day rose from 65 to 85. That is a time limited amount, but it was another program and policy decision that was made to address homelessness. Homeless Mentally Ill Outreach and Treatment Program, that just came out. We did put in our application, we were awarded that funding, but there hasn't been too much direction yet in what we're going to propose for that program. We're likely going to mobilize it to be supportive of these bigger projects you're going to be seeing in just a moment. The California Emergency Solutions and Housing Program, RCOC is doing, doing that one, Domestic Violence Assistance Program, The Resource Connection is doing that one. HEAP, which I'm going to go in great detail about in just a moment. No Place Like Home, which we're also going to go in great detail about. And then the Hope Safe Program was a one-time pilot. Calaveras County, we did attempt to go after that one, but when we saw the regulations, we weren't able, it was a matching program and it had a very short turnaround and it really wasn't the best use of our time in terms of pursuing that program because it was a Health and Human Services specific one. So we decided not to pursue that and that was $15 million over three years. So not a huge amount of resources available either. We, we turned our attention because we do have max capacity for administering all of this. This was one we decided not to pursue. Okay. So right around the time the Homeless Task Force was beginning and really becoming active, the Homeless Emergency Assist Aid Program came out, or HEAP. Not to be confused with the other HEAP program, which I know many community members take part in, which is the funding for propane and other types of things if someone's in an emergency. Has the same acronym, but it's not that. It's the Homeless Emergency Aid Program. And this was monies that was specifically purposed for addressing emergency housing needs, rapid rehousing, emergency sheltering, kind of that emergency need along the spectrum of, of services. So applications have to be, go through the community continuum of care. So about $1.2 million was made available amongst our continuum. Remember, our continuum has four counties with a $61,000 requirement for youth set aside. So Amador, Calaveras, To Waloney and Mariposa each developed our own proposals to address our individualized needs, which led Calaveras to develop a proposal at about $300,000. So our task force grappled with what did we want to do? What did we want to propose? And we considered in terms of our sheltering needs, knowing we don't have, we don't have a shelter in this community. So we talked about a centralized shelter and then we also looked at other jurisdictions. There were a number of different models that are going on statewide and nationwide. And we were really looking at this, we looked at this scattered site emergency housing proposal. And ultimately, after a couple of meetings, we decided that what would be best for our community was to propose a scattered site emergency shelter program. So our proposal is to build a minimum of nine mobile emergency shelters in three different locations with local faith-based and community-based partners. So the concept of this is that we would work with a community-based partner who was well ingrained in that particular community and/or a faith-based partner, put these mobile emergency shelters that would be small and kind of the tiny home concept, but they do have the ability to be moved. We're working with kind of some construction specs about how we can do that. And they could be the eyes and the ears and the support in the community. And then we, as Health and Human Services, could be the centralized coordinator of determining, okay, this person can go here and this person can go here. So it's done in a collaboration, but somebody has to own intake process, right? And so Health and Human Services would be the ones who would be doing that part of it. So we've been working with community partners, Blue Mountain Coalition for Youth and Families up in West Point has been a very fabulous partner, as has Oak Circle Community Church in Arnold. And we are in discussions with Angels Camp, with the Fair Grounds and Community, but that one's a little bit, we're not as far in that conversation. Again, all of this is kind of happening at once, so we're, we're kind of going all different directions to coincide with a single proposal. But as of right now, we do have really great commitment from Blue Mountain and Oak Circle to do what I had just mentioned, which is three sites, three to four shelters to do this emergency sheltering there. Our concept in Calaveras is a little bit, you know, with a, with a sheltering program, you serve, you can serve a lot of people, kind of a minimal amount in Calaveras, but the Homeless Task Forces really began to support is a, serve less, but really deep. And we would come in with very intensive case management and supportive services through behavioral health, helping individuals access benefit programs, helping them find employment, which is a huge component of Health and Human Services, which I'll speak to in just a moment, and really wrap these individuals who have been chronically homeless to be able to move them to permanency as quickly as possible. We would be in coordination with our continuum of care, of course, that is a requirement. We would coordinate with our various Homeless Task Force members. The subcommittee is really working through kind of those logistics, those, those really detailed pieces of information of how you do a proper intake. And we've been working and talking to all sorts of other communities who do something very similar to kind of get best practices and learn from their mistakes, in all honesty. Again, reemphasizing, we would be doing immediate connections to services and this application is due at the end of 2018, as in December of 2018. And we at Calaveras have already submitted our budget and project proposal to the continuum of care for their single proposal to the state for HEAP. So while this concept of scattered site emergency sheltering or sheltering at all may be a new concept for, for Calaveras in this particular manner, the concept is not new to the county. We do have, as we had mentioned earlier, some emergency sheltering programs that we've been doing over the years. And so we are building off successes. That doesn't mean we still don't have a heck of a lot to still learn, but we do have some successes under our belt that we wanted to bring to your board to highlight. In Jan, July of 2017, Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Division did open a supportive housing component for individuals who are severely mentally ill and engaged in their recovery plans. Since then, which is just a year and some change ago, we've served 12 community members who, again, are engaged in the recovery plans and eight have transitioned to permanent housing with full employment. So that's a, that's a good success that we're building off of. So Susan Sells is going to come up now to speak about another initiative, No Place Like Home, which many of you are familiar with by opening your ballots this past November.
So, good morning. I'm Susan Sells from Behavioral Health Services. I'm also the MHSA or Mental Health Services Act Coordinator and Analyst for HHSA. So we're real excited that we have an opportunity with funding through HCD or Community, Community, excuse me, Housing and Community Development in Sacramento. The funds are, our portion of the funds are, excuse me, coming from, at the state level, MHSA funds that will impact our budgets across all the counties. So, but they're, they've put together some applications for us to apply for. It's $400 million in the next year to apply for housing for people who are severely mentally ill. So, and we've been anticipating this and very excited and it's now here. So the purpose is to acquire, design, construct, rehabilitate or preserve permanent supportive housing for persons who are experiencing homelessness, chronic homelessness, or who are at risk of chronic homelessness and are in need of mental health services. The population served will be adults with serious mental illness or children with severe, severe emotional disorders and their families. So there was a resolution adopted in August of 2017 with this board that gave the authority to the HHSA Director, Kristin Brinkes, to apply for No Place Like Home Technical Assistance Planning Grant, which we then did receive. It's a small amount, 75,000, which we are using to help us move forward with the different requirements of No Place Like Home to make it happen. And these funds, of course, are available to all California counties. So one of the requirements to apply for the competitive No Place Like Home funding for, for housing requires a five-year homeless plan for each county that identifies goals, strategies, activities, both in process, or to be initiated to reduce homelessness and make it non-recurring. So this was a requirement that we have moved quickly on with the help of Calaveras, excuse me, California Institute for Behavioral Health Solutions, as the acronym CIBHS, which is an agency, statewide agency that provides technical assistance to different communities. So they are helping us with this homeless plan because we had to get it done quickly. And we had thought we'd have about six months to put it together, but the first competitive No Place Like Home application is coming out January 30th. So we had to move fast because this was a requirement of that application. So this, this, the homeless plan is going to require, it's really important that we have good community input. So we are going to be interviewing December 13th and 14th, 10, we're going to provide 10 focus groups here in, in San Andreas from, getting a voice from all sectors of the community. And it's about 90 people in all that have RSVP to say that they'll participate. So it's going to be a big effort. And, and the purpose of the plan, again, is to get the input from the community on homelessness and the issues of homelessness, but also to address the full spectrum and continuum of needs that include the homeless prevention, emergency needs, transitional supportive services, permanent supportive services, and workforce housing. So it's, it's a big effort and we're hoping it can be kind of a roadmap. We, we want to work closely with the planning department and their new housing element to make sure we're all on the same map, working together. And, and we are, so I think that's really important. And the first, we also, each county's receiving, and small counties a much less amount, but each county in California is receiving non-competitive funds of $500,000. What we have intend to do with that, and there'll be some resolutions coming to you on December 18th in regards to this, is we're going to ask that we use the funds as a cash match for all the applications we put together that are competitive, because we're going to be going hopefully for four rounds in the next, in the calendar year 2019. So we'd like to use that as our cash match leverage for all four applications. So to do that, we had, again, to also have a commitment letter from the board, from, from you all, that will, you'll see on December 18th, committing these funds for this purpose, to get the bigger bang for our dollars while we're doing this. And so the first round is 400 million. And we are in partnership, this is very important, we are in partnership with the Stanislas Housing Authority, who are going to be the owners of the housing developed and the developers helping us to make this happen. We've also used our technical assistance funds from No Place Like Home to hire or to provide funds for a grant writer who's a housing specialist through Stanislas Housing Authority to help us make this all come together quickly. And we're looking at a lot of projects. The first round, again, is January 30th, 2019. We'll have a completed homeless plan that we will post and get printed out and make sure everyone in the community sees that will be a part of this application. Do we go into any detail with that? Okay. Big picture is, we're hoping our goal is to get 20 to 25 units, oops, of housing, I'm, I'm mixing this up, but that is our goal, is 20 to 25 houses over the series of four rounds of housing through No Place Like Home. And this group, Stanislas Housing is, Authority is already in the process. They've purchased property and are constructing 20 to 25 units of workforce housing in San Andreas, which is very exciting and another huge need for our community. So we anticipate that'll be done in a year.
Yes, so I just want to interrupt Susan just a moment. So this slide right here about No Place Like Home is very specific to No Place Like Home, to the severely mentally ill community and serving that, addressing those needs. But in the full spectrum, as I had mentioned before, we have a lot of projects going all at the same time. So we wanted to give you a slide of some other initiatives that are going on. And the Stanislas Housing Authority has been working with the county over the past year to address additional needs. And one of the needs that we had identified was the need for workforce housing. So we're talking about that just general public who's kind of at that 800 to 1,100 dollar range of just non-program specific, oftentimes a little bit more than qualifies for some of our programs and a little bit too low to be able to afford a, a home here. So we're trying to address this need with this 20 to 25 units, but it also coincides with our general housing needs that we're addressing. So, sorry, Susan.
No, that's great. And then another project that we're looking to be a part of, Sierra Hope and Stanislas Housing Authority, we hope will be purchasing a building in Angels Camp if we're successful, and I say we as a community. This, these two groups are partnering together to purchase a motel and remodel up to 30 to 32 units for housing. Some of that will be set aside for veterans housing, so you'd asked about that. And that will come with the VASH vouchers through Stanislas Housing, which is a wonder, they're wonderful partners for a lot of reasons. One is that they bring Section 8 and VASH vouchers for veterans to the housing projects we're doing. The, we are going to be looking for No Place Like Home to, to, to purchase, and these will be studio apartments, up to 12 units, 10 to 12. And this will be probably in the second or third round of No Place Like Home application funding. And they're also looking to put Sierra Hope, their, their offices right there and there'll be room to do that. And they also want to create a community room for the community, which is wonderful.
I could speak to this last one. I just wanted to add another services that we have locally, not enough of, in all honesty. We do have some homeless prevention resources, which is sometimes the, the forgotten component of addressing homelessness, which is preventing individuals from not, from needing to leave the homes that they're already in. So Sierra Hope has a small amount of monies available for some homeless prevention. I believe they've already expended them for the year.
Pretty much.
Pretty much. And then Health and Human Services, through some of our programs, again, very specific populations, CalWorks, or for those who are part of the, engaged in their mental health recovery, we do have some, some prevention resources there as well, but again, not enough for the community, but we just wanted to make your board aware.
So in terms of programmatic support for these housing projects, one requirement of No Place Like Home is to have support services offered in, through behavioral health. Because in No Place Like Home, the clients, the, the persons eligible will be clients of behavioral health and that means they would qualify health, and that means they would qualify for Medi-Cal and Medicare, they will be, we will be able to offer them through Full Service Partnership, or FSP, 24/7 case management once they get into a house. And that's going to be critical to help them succeed and to help the community to see this as a very viable opportunity for people to live independently. Housing is so critical for behavioral health clients. So, let's see. That's going to be available. We just want you to know that that will be co-hand in hand with the housing. We also have, do you want to speak to the CCP?
Yeah, I can speak to the next one. So, we just wanted to kind of give an overview of the various programmatic support that's coming from Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health, as well as some other partnerships that we have. And one very well-recognized partnership, which you'll be hearing about more later on today, is the Community Corrections Partnership, which is AB 109 prison realignment, as many of you know. And so, Health and Human Services works in partnership with probation, and the sheriff's department, and the chief of police in Angels Camp, and a number of the CCP partners to serve individuals who are incarcerated and/or move them to the community, transition them to, back into the community through our day reporting center. And we do have really robust services, particularly for a small county, through the CCP-funded services, and so it's just something that we're really proud of. In addition, we do provide crisis support throughout the community. We have our Behavioral Health Services Sheriff's Liaison, who works from 12 noon until 9:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, to address some of those high-needs usages, uses, and serve our high-needs clients who are in crisis. She is, works in partnership with the sheriff's department and with the police department to go out on calls and help to de-escalate crisis situations. We also have a crisis unit that particularly works in partnership with Mark Twain. We have one licensed clinician and one case manager to do crisis evaluations at the hospital. And then, if one needs a higher level of care, like at a psychiatric health facility, we do provide that bed finding. I'll let Susan speak to the next two, because these are new initiatives that we had competed for and were successful in obtaining additional, funding for additional services in our community.
So, these are really important, relatively new support services that we are providing through behavioral health. We had a three-year grant to support the triage case manager working at the sheriff's office. We were refunded again in a competitive grant for another three years. Real important. She's doing a great job. And so, we also, this time, applied for children's triage, which would involve one full-time crisis case manager and two peer support specialists who are part-time to work with families and youth in crisis. So, we have a close collaboration and did a lot of planning with the school staff. And the idea is that we can respond to them and work with their school counselors anytime there is a crisis. And this will be a new, new, and we hope, important service that we'll be providing. We're hoping to have the people ready to go in January. There was a delay at the governor's level, but we are hoping to get a whole three years with their support. We also have a plan with, that we are hoping to be supported and approved through a group called the MHSOAC, which is Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, that oversees our MHSA, many of our MHSA services at the county level. So, we are approaching them on January 24th with help from a board of supervisor. Kristin will be there, up there speaking. We have about 10 people coming, NAMI president, NAMI families, some consumers, who are all going to go en masse to Sacramento, and will get about 15 minutes to ask if we can use our funding for a five-year period for a full-time case manager, peer specialist, who will work with, immediately with the persons returning from the, discharged from the hospital, and getting them help with housing, which will be huge, and getting their safety net services so they're comfortable, so that we can immediately engage them back into mental health for support. And it will make a big difference. Right now, we have a percentage that really surprised me. It's jumped a little, but it's 39% in a year's time of people who return from the hospital go back in that period of 12 months. We need that to change. It's for so many reasons, for the client themselves, for the community, the agencies. We just need to see, and lots of research shows if you can get to them in seven days when they get, come back from the hospital and outreach and get the services they need if they trust you, and you develop that level of trust, that it can impact and make a big difference. So, that's coming up, and we'll be able to let you know how that goes after, Kristin will after January 24th. And then, you'd mentioned the mental health board.
Yes. I just wanted to make the connection again, that much of this work and these programmatic pieces are, there's communication with our mental health board. They are the oversight committee and advisory committee to the board. So, we very much work in collaboration with the mental health board on all these various initiatives. So, we just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you. Okay.
Sam Leach, Chief Probation Officer. Kristin, this is very thorough, and I just want to commend you on your leadership. I know there's a lot of people partnering, but your leadership's appreciated, and I'm happy to be here riding her coattails again. The CCP, the Community Corrections Partnership, voted unanimously last month to set aside up to $50,000 to do some leveraging off of this project. Kristin's already working to do a lot of the heavy lift. And what we are proposing, and what is actually Agenda Item 18 immediately after this, is a CCP update, including that $50,000 that's been voted on. Our part is very small, but we wanted to utilize State 109 funding where possible to piggyback this project. And there's a lot of details that will still need to be worked out on that. I doubt anything, you know, immediately happens, because I will have to be coming back to you guys with more details when we're actually ready to build something, when we have the where and the why and the how. We really just wanted to set aside the money to make sure that we get included in this project at this time. Why we're doing it? Thank you. We're doing it because, basically what this slide is, is when we ran the numbers, and this is about two years old here, but when we ran the numbers to see if our day reporting center is working, one of the most encouraging things that we saw is, when people actually go through and successfully complete the program, their recidivism, their re-arrest rate, I'm sorry, is, you know, less than half of what it is for the people who don't go through and complete. So, we know if we can have them here in San Andreas, and we know if we have them regularly going to the day reporting center, that we can impact them. There's so many services over there to help them turn their lives around. That's obviously more problematic when we have, you know, violent or mentally ill offenders who are homeless. So, you know, frankly, we want to know where they are. We want them here locally when we have a chance. We have a lot of people that we contract for sober living beds when they're re-entering our community and they go live there for a while, but there are a certain segment of our population that either aren't appropriate to that, don't get accepted to those homes because they're not appropriate for those programs, or frankly, that just, you know, we do have offenders that don't use drugs and don't need to be in sober living, but they have other issues. And so, when those people need a place to stay, we'd like to have, make sure that we have dedicated beds that are safe and separate from what a lot of the others are, and that we're smartly using state funds for that.
Sam, thank you very much for coming in. Can you convert these percentages to actual numbers for us?
Off the top of my head?
Educated guess.
Okay, sure. We run somewhere between 50 and 100 people through the day reporting center every year.
Okay.
So, you know, 25 to 50 people less likely, sorry, 25 to 50 people who may have, you know, gotten re-arrested if they're not in programming versus if we get them through. And so, the idea with the, piggybacking the tiny homes project is to have a couple of tiny homes right here, you know, as close to the jail as I can get them. There's a lot of details.
Parking lot?
Well, frankly, you know, with some of the guys that come to me, a lot of the, and by guys, I mean the offenders that are coming into my office asking for immediate housing, like that was the way that CDCR did things for a lot of years. And the state had beds for people who were re-entering the community. When realignment happened, you know, it happened very quickly. And so, some communities that already had, you know, buildings that they could buy, and, you know, tens or hundreds of millions coming to them for realignment funding, it's nothing to chip off a few million bucks and go buy a housing. You know, for us, if we're getting a million and a half, it's a lot harder to go buy an old hotel and staff it and do some of the things that have happened in other counties. Plus, we don't have that robust of a need. But for the couple of people that we have here and there coming out, it would be nice to have, you know, two or three tiny homes set aside where we could keep a real close watch on them. We're not putting them out somewhere where they're, you know, embedded in a housing tract somewhere or something like that. We can keep an eye on them here at government property if we're able to work that out.
Thanks, Sam.
Sure.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. So, moving into the last two slides, addressing sustainability, because again, this presentation covers, it's a very high level about a lot of the work that the community's been doing. And so, in terms of addressing sustainability, it's pretty simple. When we have one-time resources and runtime funding, we're trying to do one-time constructions and set aside monies for operating costs if that funding source allows us to do so. For any ongoing staffing, we're looking to more ongoing funding resources, right? Some Health and Human Services funding or additional grants that we can obtain that are more longer term. So, again, one-time costs, going towards one-time cost, or excuse me, one-time funding going toward one-time costs, ongoing, we'll try to utilize funding sources that are a lot more sustainable. But then, really, at the core of what this is, the whole purpose of this, is that we really do believe that if we can successfully stabilize our community members that lack stable housing, right, wrap them with all the supports that they need, and we can really decrease their need for those super-high-level services, the repeat offenders, or excuse me, the repeat going to the hospitals, the repeat offenders that are going back into the, to the jail, we can, we really do believe that we can make a long-term change and really affect the lives of those individuals and overall benefit our community. Okay. So, on the horizon, one thing that was mentioned before, we're very grateful to leadership Calaveras, who has really jumped on board in terms of taking the lead of organizing this annual point-in-time count, which, in all honesty, didn't, the point-in-time count didn't have a huge amount of weight in the prior years. It was, everybody did it, you needed it for HUD funds. But now, with the money being tied to this point-in-time count, the most realistic and accurate numbers possible is really important. So, Calaveras, our leadership, Calaveras has volunteered to coordinate this, which the count is going to be happening January 23rd, 2019. So, anybody who's interested, please let us know. And they are also going to be working on a sustainability plan to be able to have the point-in-time count organization, the logistics of it, be ongoing, so we could pick it up and we're not every year kind of scrambling about, what are we going to do? They're working on a sustainability plan. So, again, grateful to them. We will be bringing periodic updates to your board on various homeless task force initiatives. And then, you will see periodic requests from us for additional staff. Peter kind of alluded to some of that earlier. We're looking to utilize, to staff somebody in Health and Human Services who would be that coordination and maybe even serve in that housing coordinator role. We're still working out those details. As also part of the housing element, you're going to see additional requests for fee waivers, amendments to land use regulations, zoning code changes, various types of regulatory requests for amendments to address some of these needs. There is a housing element component that asks, or that does allow for us to evaluate county-owned surplus land, to determine suitability for affordable housing. And then, lastly, we will be bringing you a number of resolutions or letters or what have you to, because some of the funding sources do require them, or when we just want to make the board known, we would ask for your support in those pursuits of additional funding for additional resources in our community, as well as approval to accept those funds in the event that they are awarded. And so, we just wanted to reiterate, this is, again, in accordance with our housing element. So, on behalf of the Calaveras County Homeless Task Force, we thank you for your time, and we are open for questions. And there's a lot of people here, in case I don't know the answer to anything specific.
Supervisor Mills?
Oh, let him go, thanks.
Supervisor Clav?
Kristin, I talked to you in length a week or so ago about this, and I was one of the fortunate people. I had a grandmother that lived into an in-law house, and that got turned into like a kid's house, because I got to live there for several years. And after I left, it became other siblings, and the list was long. And I would like to see more of that with the private sector, being able to do more of that, or five acres and stuff, that's what the family's house was. And it was really helpful for the community, because I didn't rent an apartment at that point, and neither did my siblings and other people came down. So, I would really like to see the individuals be able to start doing that more aggressively with the county, where we can start having the people actually put it, instead of coming with government funds, you know, use both of those, where we're providing, letting the people provide that access and stuff. And I know that our requirements are a little harder than those around the counties. I'd like to look into that and get the same input that the other counties do. I'd like to really see the county go in that direction.
Thank you. Just for clarity's sake, then, we're talking about like secondary dwelling.
Yes.
Okay. So, I think that I could work with Peter and our people.
And all of that used to be the grandparents' business. Now, it's more, if you notice, I know it's only a thing that the 30-year-olds are hit harder on the housing element, so, and that's what happened in our case, too, it became from the elderly people to the younger people getting started.
You may recall back in July, the board adopted an ordinance amendment that simplified the procedures, reduced the costs to come into compliance with state law, but also to just look at that very issue that you raised, is let's make it easier to build granny homes. We call them granny flats or granny homes, but they're really available to anyone. And they're affordable, they're definitely an affordable component, or one component of the affordable housing range that we have here. So, your points will take in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
Peter, you were talking about the 1099 homes. S P 1099.
Yeah, there are a number. I never keep track of all the different numbers.
Everybody's got a number for it.
But there's, yeah, the various government code requirements for secondary dwelling units, we call them accessory dwellings here, and there's a number of different provisions in state law that attempt to provide more opportunities for those to be constructed by the private sector. Individual homeowners, you know, larger land developers have the opportunity now to provide a secondary dwelling on the property. It's not considered an increase in density, and again, it's intended to provide an affordable option, small-scale home for either an elderly family member, child, you know, a young adult, or actually anyone. It could be rented out to anyone in the community, it doesn't have to be a family member.
And one of the difficulties is, is because there are some places where they would prefer to have the apartment relocated within the footprint of the existing dwelling. That is another kind of gray area that we're working in right now, that we probably should at some point discuss.
Well, they can be either attached or detached.
Yeah, it's the attached one.
The bond is part of the primary residence, or it could be a separate standalone structure.
Right. Kristin, I know, thank you. I like your time, by the way. Kristin, the concept that there are so many different programs, you know, you talked about scattered housing, this is almost like scattered funding, too, because it's coming at you in different ways, and also in different timelines and different requirements. And as a state, has anybody pushed back and said to the state, we need a clearinghouse here, that we need to, you know, kind of have a way to look at all of this at one shot, rather than these little pieces that keep falling from different places out of the sky?
Not to my knowledge. I'll ask our CAO if he's aware of any, sorry, not to, but I don't, not from the Health and Human Services perspective. Health and Human Services is oftentimes where a lot of, for the counties, the counties are oftentimes designating Health and Human Services as the department to carry out the applications and work for the very obvious natural fit. So, at my level, I'm not aware of any push to centralize these funding sources and such through my associations. That would be awesome, but I'll kind of turn it to our central, to our county administrator.
No, and I, you know, that's actually a great question, because I think we are seeing a couple of models. Kristin graciously took on some more of these pieces when I, when some of it was possibly coming to administration, but I truly feel that Health and Human Services is a better place for this to be at, just based on how they're already structured, the partnerships they have in the communities. It just makes the most sense. But I also think because there are so many different avenues that the legislature's taken, there are so taken, there are so many different avenues that some of these funds are coming in, that they're, it just is too much of its, in its infancy to have that coordination, but certainly that's something that I could see either CSAC and/or CWDA, the Welfare Directors Association, taking on and trying to look at centralizing that. Right now, there is just, you know, it's all these different pots of money, a lot of it, you know, and in some cases, they actually took some money away from mental health services to fund more of the homeless programs that would make a natural sense that Health and Human Services would be vying for that. But it definitely is still in its infancy, and that's a great question for the associations to lobby for too.
And part of it might be that each one of these agencies has a different mission statement, so the result is, is that they're not all wanting to play by the same ultimate outcome. And I just would like to see some pushback back to the state to say, because there's counties that aren't going to participate simply because they can't drag the data together fast enough, they can't mobilize fast enough. And so they're going to be left in the dark, and yet the expectation's still going to be there. That to me seems to be a problem. The other thing is, is that, you know, talking about Frog Town or any more remote site to a city center, and we've got seven distinct centers in this county, is are we also able to coordinate transit to be able to help them in getting to and from those locations? So Frog Town would be probably a great location, but I think we need to talk to transit and be sure that we can get people to and from rather than walking along Highway 49 in the south side of Angels Camp, which is very dangerous at best. So that was just another point. Yeah, I just want to be sure that we have the data in place, kind of in advance, and the better data we have, the less it's going to be a difficulty for us in getting mobilization done on the timeframes that they're looking for. You talked about a location in Angels Camp, and has the city been approached, broached with this at all?
So we've been working more with the city administrators, more on the Sierra Hope project, they've been involved in that discussion more in the Gold Country Inn. Chief Ellis is part of the homeless task force, and I cannot remember off the top of my head the full, the full list, but of everybody, but we can certainly re-reach out to them.
I would, I would do that for this reason, is that that is previously a T O T income for them. And when you take that off their books, are they aware that that's coming off their books?
Yeah, so the fair, fair representation with Lori is part of the task force as well, one of her team members. But yes, and we are, you're very much speaking to a point that I just wanted to reiterate, and is, we are building this plane while it is flying, very much so, but the entire state's building the plane while it's flying. So this is what we've been working on and what we're proposing. I'm sure we've missed a partner, so thank you for bringing that up. I don't think we've reached out to transit. I'm sure somebody's going, something's going to change a little bit, and that's why we want to bring these updates to your board, is to show you kind of, and be transparent about the fact that we have, we know what we're doing from our experience, but this is uncharted territory for us, especially in these funding sources. So appreciate, we appreciate the, oh, don't forget about this person and don't forget about this, because that's, that's what we kind of need.
I get real nervous as a pilot when somebody says, "Build the plane while you're flying." So, yeah.
Build the ship while it's sailing.
It creates a lot of nuances that I just don't want to vision. But the point is, is that you're going to need a lot of assistance from this board, you're going to need assistance from other partners within the county, and hopefully you can keep us appraised as we go forward, of what we need to do to help you to get these goals accomplished. So thank you for your presentation, all of you.
Supervisor Garmini?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Kristin, for the presentation today. I have a, as you're well aware, I serve on several committees for this board, interact with HHS, and I want to thank you, and I want to especially thank your staff for all the work that they've done in, every day, but also in educating a board of supervisor member. Our last two years, I would think that this has probably been one of the most fulfilling things I've got to interact with in our community. And it's because of your staff that are working hard and doing really hard work. I mean, we talk a lot about land use and budgets, but the work that your people are doing every day to make our community better is really important, and I really appreciate it. From helping out with food to helping out families, you know, we've got representatives from First Five to Mental Health Board here, and the work that they do is hard work, and I really appreciate it. I appreciate also the comprehensive approach that you're taking to this, bringing in the community members, helping people like myself who don't have a lot of background in Health and Human Services, understand the issues of homelessness, which is truly one of the most complex issues I think you could take on as a policymaker. I didn't understand that until your staff really helped me understand. Every homeless person has a different story and a different set of needs. You know, we like to think as community members that oftentimes you just call the sheriff's office, and they're going to come in and the problem's going to get fixed, and that's usually not the case. They'll deal with the crisis, but sending out the social workers to me with these people, and I know we've worked on several issues in my communities where, you know, you send, we start with what is the issue and what is the problem here that we're trying to fix? It's not just a law enforcement issue. Sometimes it is, but sometimes it's not. And finding out where that goes is really greatly appreciated by myself, I know my community, and I appreciate the sheriff and your office working so closely together. I did have, I also want to thank you personally for, you know, as you've gone through this process up in West Point figuring this out, you brought this to me, and I said, "Oh, wow", hating on a second. We don't want to start going down that path, and you really brought me along, and you've done a lot of legwork in my community, I want to thank you for that. You know, you spent a lot of time up in West Point and up country, and it's greatly appreciated by myself and our community. So I just want to really compliment you on the approach that you're taking with Health and Human Services as an organization, and I really want to compliment in your team on how you've been taking on this issue. And particularly recognizing that we're a small, poor county, being aggressive and going out and getting those grants. We don't put general funds into your department, and you continue to excel and succeed in meeting, meeting the needs of our community, and I appreciate that, and the numbers, and there's so many people in this room that have worked on that. I just want to thank everybody, and keep up the good work, and let us know how we could help.
Thank you. Thank you, HHS A Team Members Rock, and they know that, they're grateful to work with them every day. And Blue Mountain, Katrine's here, she's going to probably say something in public comment, and Roger from Oak Circle, I mean, this is a community-wide effort, so we say thank you for that acknowledgement.
With that, we'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Several years back, when the Mental Health Services Act was passed by the public in California in 2004, there were several different categories. And the category I would like to address today is the $600,000 that this county got for housing. I'd like to know what's going on with it at this point. Thank you.
Susan, I know that answer, oh, she left, okay. I can address that. So George is referring to the fact that in Mental Health Services Act, there are various components of the funding. So the housing monies was a funding source that was provided to counties and then taken back and then re-provided to counties, and so a lot of us were kind of navigating how we access that funding. And so in Calaveras, because it is a housing component, that is the funding that was primarily utilized for the Vision House, which is the program that is very much a permanent supportive housing program, because individuals are put into the housing component for a time-limited amount of time, and then quickly moved to permanent supportive housing, so.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Good morning, it's still morning. Katrine Lambie, Blue Mountain Coalition for Youth and Families in West Point. I have to say that for us, this is a dream come true. Finding Kristin and working with this group has been just really something we've been looking for for many years. We're a well-established community organization, and for the longest time, we knew that housing was a real issue in our community. We have homeless people in West Point. And finally, and at last, we're able to work with a really efficient, creative, dedicated group, and we can bring a piece, an important piece to the plate. We own a piece of land, tiny houses placed on the land of our community garden, within a really functioning community garden with lots of comings and goings from the community, right next door to a community center where homeless people can come and have a meal and meet with various agencies and support services that will be offered to them. I mean, it's just amazing that this is happening. And we have been going around in the community, talking to people, and I have to say that the response is really positive. This fits the West Point spirit of taking care of their own. People are really excited, and I'm really thankful and thrilled to be part of this process. So the Blue Mountain Coalition for Youth and Families is absolutely willing to do whatever it takes to partner with us. So thank you for supporting this, and thank you, Kristin.
Yes, I too am extremely supportive of this. To give you a little history, about 25, 30 years ago, funding was available through CDBG and CSBG to build and staff a homeless shelter. The Human Resource Council, when it was called the Human Resource Council, the person in charge of the homeless program didn't want to do the work. So when the first round of funding came through, the Women's Crisis Line was able to build a shelter. Second round of funding came through, and they still didn't want to do the work. So that's how we got our second shelter. A long time coming, and it's heartening to see an agency step up and take on the responsibility of coordinating this. And that's what kept us from progressing 25, 30 years ago, was no one was willing to take on the effort of coordinating the money, finding staffing places and all of that. So we may be 25, 30 years later, but the need is still there, and if there's an opportunity now, we need to support this effort any way we can, from you folks, from the community, from all of the agencies and organizations. So once again, it's long overdue. Thank you.
Good morning, Vicki Renke, Calaveras County. I just wanted to mention one thing, because it gets very frustrating, is we have to remember, and this is nothing to do with the local, I'm talking big. Government doesn't do this very well, and we all know that. They don't solve social issues very well. We do it here locally, which is why I have to say some of the programs sound wonderful, because they're a hands-up programs, they're not dependency programs, those are the ones I think that we should support. But to remind people that, and we seem to continue to expect our government to do everything for us, and I want to stand up here and say, "Please, let's not do that, let's depend on our communities." It used to be that the churches, local volunteer groups, nonprofits, were helping people, families, okay, that's the big one to me, families are so important. I always wonder, why are these people out there without any family support? Now, I do have a story. I had a nephew who was homeless, because he chose to be, and sadly, it was hard, hard love that had to be given, so we had to watch him be homeless until he realized, "You have to work, you can't be using drugs." And so some of that is out there, and those are some of those hands-up programs that are available. But we, we can't believe we're going to solve the whole problem. And one of the things I think we have to recognize is, let's help the people in our communities and not encourage more people to come here to use services. I know that sounds terrible, but that is what happens a lot of times, you become this magnet to people coming here to use services rather than for them to pick themselves up and become good citizens. Mental health, a whole different issue, and that's something that we went away from having mental health hospitals for people who truly need that medical care. I think that's something, I guess maybe my point is, I want to see you guys fighting for some of those things and not just going along because the government wants to hand you some money, but let's start fighting for what we know is right as Americans and as citizens, that we can't just throw money at this stuff. We have to make sure, and again, I think what I'm hearing today, a lot of it is good, solid community programs. So I just want to say thank you for that, and to remind people that we still need to fight to make sure that we don't think government is the answer to everything. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none?
Morning, Chair and Supervisors. I'm Jim Cruz, Deputy Director for the Santa Claus Regional Housing Authority. Just want to take a minute to just introduce myself and let you know that the Housing Authority is willing to work with the county and behavioral health and whatever endeavors it needs for, to help with the homeless crisis and affordable housing needs.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, closed public comments, bring it back to the board. Any further board comments or anything? No? This was an informational item, so Kristin and all the staff, thank you so much for this presentation. And we'll move on to item number 18. Okay, we will take a 10-minute break, Sam.
Almost, Sam.
Sam, almost. If you had another. All right, we're back from break, moving on to item number 18. Madam Clerk.
Item 18 is from AB 109. Approved fiscal year 2018-19 CCP implementation plan with budget adjustment requiring a four-fifths vote of the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning, Sam Leach, Chief Probation Officer, and here today as the Chair of the Community Corrections Partnership, otherwise known as the CCP. I'll be very brief. Every December, I come to the board with what's essentially a narrative to describe how we're spending the AB 109 money this year. And this year, I happen to have a budget adjustment with that related to agenda item 17 that we just covered. We added in the $50,000 set aside to help leverage off the efforts with the homeless task force for the tiny homes. So because of that, I put it on the regular agenda, and also wanted to just do a very brief run-through of how we're spending the money. So part of the reason I, that we do this narrative along with the spending plan is the Board of State Community Corrections, otherwise known as the BSCC, requires that we show them how we're spending the money, and in exchange for that, they give us, in the AB 109 fund balance, we get $100,000 each year for doing this and providing it to the BSCC by December 15th, which is why I tend to show up in early December and brief everybody. So with that, I'll jump into, most of what we're doing is stuff that we've been doing for a few years now. What's being funded out of AB 109? Some of the brief highlights, we've got a sheriff's deputy, I'm sorry, a sheriff's corporal, three correctional officers, three deputy probation officers, a probation aide, one full-time and one part-time substance abuse counselor, and two behavioral health clinicians, all funded there. We also have, which is not included, in November, we approved what will probably amount to a case manager, three position. That's not included in this yet, so we'll probably be coming back at mid-year. That's to help with linkages between the treatment professionals and kind of public health needs, as well as what the deputy probation officers are doing with case management. So we'll get into more of that later, but we continue to build services as best we can within the budget that we're provided by the state. Programming, we do alternative sentencing over there, putting people on ankle monitors and monitoring them. We provide anger management and domestic violence groups, cognitive behavioral therapy, educational assistance. I know we still have the G D program going in the jail, and we've got the former warden who is going into the jail and working with folks there through a partnership with the library, going in and helping to teach people to read, so literacy programs. We do fund some incarceration costs through this. Medical insurance, we help pay for the catastrophic inmate medical insurance. We have a mindfulness meditation group, which is great for PTSD inmates, veterans especially. Parent projects, so we offer some parenting skills to folks that are trying to turn their life around and are also parenting kids at the same time, help reduce the cycles, so to speak. Just trying to hit the highlights. Restorative justice. Restorative justice and victim services, we fund a position there, although it's currently unfilled. Substance abuse, like I said, we have one and a half substance abuse counselors. We're looking to fill the full-time position as of right now, so the now half-timer is working really hard, going in and out of the jail and back and forth, but hopefully we'll have that position filled soon. Running groups in the jail and at the day reporting center. Some transportation costs, including bus passes and occasional reimbursement for other transportation needs. We have the work program through the jail. So, those are some of the highlights. I'll stop and answer any questions the Board might have at this time.
Any Board member have a question? Supervisor Mills?
Just simply to update, what is the current caseloading? Caseloading, number of people being served?
Total number of people, specific to 109 offenders?
Yeah, to 109. You didn't know I was going to ask the question, so I apologize in advance.
No, 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 that's okay. Those numbers, we tend to sit about 35 for the PRCS population, which is post-release community supervision. Those are the folks who would have previously, or that are re-entering from prison, right? The ones that would have been on parole previously but are now with us. So, those are the PRCS folks, roughly about 35 right now. Mandatory supervision, 1170 caseload, which is the ones who now go to what we call county prison. They're basically here. They would have been committed to prison before, but now they're committed to longer terms in our county jail. Those numbers tend to sit around 15, so it's smaller than the PRCS caseload. And then, we also include the high-risk probationers, a lot of times, especially in the day reporting center. That caseload really fluctuates more and can get a bit higher. We tend to try to cap it at about 30, but at any given time, we could have as many as, you know, 60 to 70 high-risk probationers that we're managing. And by high-risk, I mean high-risk to re-offend based on our risk assessment instrument that we use. So, you know, round number is roughly 100 folks that we're looking at at any given time.
Okay.
It fluctuates pretty wildly. It can come down to around 60 or it can get up there. You know, one benefit to having 109 is we have been able to hard-cap those caseloads and make sure that we're really focusing our supervision efforts. So, if staffing gets lower, right now, it's up, but if staffing gets lower, we always make sure that these positions are protected and that we're, you know, we've got people supervising these people intimately. I don't want to have high-risk caseloads of 75 people and PRCS caseloads of 50-plus people where we can, you know, keep a close eye on them and make sure that we're linking them to the services they need.
Thank you, Sam.
Any other Board questions, comments? If not, we'll open up public comment. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Board. This is an action item, we need a four-fifths vote on. So, I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I'll move the item.
The motion by Supervisor Clapp. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Garamendi. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this 5-0, Sam. All right, moving on to item number 19. Before we start, Madam Clerk, hold on. Can the people in the foyer, please, keep it down out there a little bit? You're disrupting the meeting. We can hear you. So, just kind of keep it down a little bit. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item 19 is from the Sheriff's Department. To approve Amendment 1 to Agreement for Services with Dirty Works for Cannabis Eradication and Abatement Services and approve a budget transfer from contingency in the amount of $75,000 for the marijuana enforcement team to cover costs associated with same. Requires a four-fifths affirmative vote.
Good afternoon. Jim Macedo, Sheriff's Office. As noted by the Board Clerk, there are two items on this particular Agenda Item. I'll be handling the contingency transfer request and the amount of $75,000. I believe Bonnie Rich from the County Administrative Office may be a better person to answer any questions as it relates to the contract. However, I am able to answer questions as it relates to the working portions of the contract. With that said, I believe the item's relatively self-explanatory, although I hear there may be some questions, so I will take those. I also know that we met with the County Administrative Officer, Mr. Lutz, so he may be able to provide some answers to some questions as well.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
Yes, Captain, it says that this would be available to the, fund to the end of the year, so you feel that that's sufficient to get you through to the end of the fiscal year?
Correct. I mean, it's, you know, it's always difficult to predict what's going to happen in the future, but as noted in the budget packet, we originally made a request for an additional $100,000 that proposed in preliminary budget last year, but based upon discussions with the CAO, we reduced that amount prior to final budget. So, unfortunately, we're back here with the $75,000 request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Board comments, questions?
Can I add something, Mr. Chair? I did want to echo what Captain Macedo's indicated. I did have a couple of meetings with the Sheriff's Office on this issue. My recommendation to them was to put in the transfer request as they did with contingency draw, as opposed to moving funds from other units within the Sheriff's Department. My rationale for this, and I know we've worked hard to guard the use of contingency dollars, the rationale behind submitting it the way that I did is we have had significant questions on making sure that we're accounting for all of the costs of cannabis enforcement programs. I felt that if we were transferring from existing patrol operations, it would be doing more of what we've already been doing, which is basically putting those costs as a hidden cost within the general fund. So, I felt that bringing it forward as a contingency draw was in the spirit of making sure that we're accounting for those costs as related to the cannabis enforcement. Had this been a contract within the regular patrol, it probably would have been a different matter and a different discussion point.
Okay, no other questions by the Board? We'll open it for public comment. Public comment on this issue?
Off the bat, I have two questions. How much money is in the contingency fund or program? And where does the money come from to create a contingency amount of money? And if money's taken out of contingency, how is it replaced?
Any other public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, whenever we come to these points where additional funds have to be requested to do different things, I think it's a good time that we ask to see what the results of previous funds expended have delivered. I'm always excited to hear about abatements and eradications going on with marijuana. But it brings up a question of, you know, how effective are we being? We've spent money. The Sheriff's Department has been giving a lot of money over the last year or two and I completely support it for equipment, personnel, code compliances received, people. I mean, the funds are going out there and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask what the results may have been. So, my question is either to the Sheriff or the head of the Building Department, going back to the beginning of the year 2018, how many grows were estimated to exist in this county? And that's non-personal grows, that's the commercial grows. And do we have a number of abatements by the Sheriff's Department that were initiated and completed by the Sheriff's Department? What would that number be? The same for code compliance, how many were initiated and completed by code compliance? Then, we have state and federal activity. How many were initiated and completed by state or federal agencies on marijuana grows? And then, how many voluntary abatements do we have? And a voluntary abatement is not a harvest. It's when they get rid of their grow and take their equipment out and go away. All of these, of course, would have to have clearance by environmental health, that the properties that they leave behind or abated are clean and ready for repurposing for another use. And then, with the math, starting with our beginning number of, in the beginning of 2018, less all the abatements, what's the approximate number or best estimate of non-personal grows or commercial grows in the county at this point? We can go on a little bit further and talking about the special investigations, I think the packet mentioned that there were several. I presume that to be three or four. And that $75,000 is to handle three or four investigations. If that number is greater, if this is going to result in more activities for abatement, we'd certainly like to know about that. And if $75,000 is not enough, I'd like to see a request made for a lot more so we can get this cleaned up. So, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning, Marty Crane. So, I just want to step back just a little bit and maybe remind ourselves, the sheriff needs what he needs. We got to give him what he needs. And we all knew that that need was going to be there. I'm also remembering that the community ask, and then they ask again, and then they ask again and again, and then they started demanding to know, how are you going to pay for this when you pass this ban? How are you going to pay for all this eradication? And we were never given an answer. So, here we are today. This is how we do it, by taking it. I understand why you're taking it out of contingency to be more transparent about documenting the expenses on eradication, on the marijuana issue. But nonetheless, here we are. We still want to know, where was your plan? I think Supervisor Mills, you're the one that kept saying, there is a plan, there's money. And everyone kept asking, where is it and how are we paying for it? So, here we are today. Thank you very much.
Mike Faudy, District 2, echoing Ms. Crane's thoughts. I'm not involved with the industry, but I am now because I have to pay for some of the $75,000. I'm a taxpayer. You guys had your chance to, you know, address the reality of the cannabis situation. You had your chance and you could have generated funds to eradicate illegal activities without affecting my pocketbook. But now, you're affecting my pocketbook and you're asking for more money. It's a contingency, but it comes out of the budget. The budget is generated by many things, including taxes, which I pay. And I don't want to have to keep giving you guys money for eradication efforts and cleanup when you could, you had the opportunity to generate them yourselves. You know, they're asking for $75,000 after six months of the fiscal year. So, what they asked for gone through half of the year. What's going to happen next year? Is it going to get them through a quarter of the year? Are they going to ask for more money? Yeah, any way you look at it, it's coming out of my pocket. I mean, it's coming out of not just mine, but as a taxpayer, all of us. You can, you can, you know, do something so you can make the industry pay for their issues. Quit asking us to pay for their issues. I don't want to have to do that much longer, especially when I look around at other states, other municipalities. Look at Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara County, they went from zero on the scale of, I mean, I'm not very educated on this, but they went from zero on the scale of commercial cultivation and how to handle it. They skyrocketed up to they're kind of the poster boys for the state now. They did it pretty much overnight as far as government's concerned. So, why can't you guys do this? Instead of asking me for more money, you know, that's all we're asking. You got a chance to take care of things. Let them pay for their own problems. I don't want to pay for them.
I'm Ray Goodpastor, District 2. Morning, or afternoon now. Michael brings up an interesting point. He doesn't want to pay for eradication. He wasn't all about a ban. The growers wanted to pay for these things to, one, eliminate some of their competition, I suppose, and another, to prove that they are being good community members. They were like, let us help pay for eradication. Well, that didn't happen and there's no use going back over all that stuff, but there are so many people who were very, very much for the ban and eradication. And I think maybe the Board of Supervisors could start a GoFundMe page. Maybe Bill McManus could run it. He seems good at organizing those things. And maybe some of the people who are really, really upset and losing sleep over this stuff could feel better by getting involved and putting a little bit of skin in that game, right? It's just an idea and I know it sounds funny and I know I kind of am coming off clownish, but the truth is the truth. The money's got to come from somewhere. I'm in for 100 bucks. How about that?
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. There's a couple of questions asked. Captain Macedo, you want to answer some of the questions? And the ones that you can't, we'll have CAO Lutz.
With respect to some of the questions, I'll defer to the CAO's office regarding contingency fund questions. To date, we have done about 52 eradications. The Building Department has a separate contract with, for abatement. It's separate from this one, so I won't speak on their behalf either. With respect to the rest of the questions relating to voluntary abatement and how many grows there were and given years, that's something that's probably much better suited for a study session. I was here today to present a contract and a request for contingency funds, so I'm not prepared to answer questions about how many grows there were a year and a half ago as compared to now and how many self, how many of those self-abated. I did try to get a couple of those questions answered from staff back at the office, but they haven't responded. So, if that information is something the Board's interested in, then we can bring that back for a particular study session to go over statistics. What I can tell you, though, with respect to the contractor and our statistics, is every case we do, we obviously write criminal reports, submit those to the DA's office, they're accounted for. Every dollar we spend as it relates to this contract is processed through internal Sheriff's Office paperwork. It's submitted through the county's financial structure and bills are paid through the auditor's office, so there's a thorough accounting of everything related to these operations. And then, lastly, with respect to some numbers that were sent out, about $75,000 for three or four investigations, that's not the case. We currently have more than three or four cases under investigation. And also, what we're asking for, the $75,000, it should take us through the end, we're hoping it'll take us through the end of the fiscal year, which is July, and people start cultivating marijuana again once the weather improves. So, we want to be ready to address those investigations and eradicate early rather than come back to the Board during the spring. So, hopefully, that answers some of the basic questions. I know I didn't answer all of them, but again, that's much, much more suited to a study session if you want specific statistics.
CAO Lutz?
Yes. With regard specifically to the questions on the contingency fund, so contingency fund is developed when we finalize the budget. So, we take what the department requests are for expenditures. We factor out the revenues that they receive, their grants, through other revenue sources. And then, that net amount is what the general fund contributes. When we get to the closing out of the books and moving into the next fiscal year, you have a certain amount of fund balance or excess general fund that stays in the general fund, which then is rebudgeted in that next fiscal year. So, the difference between what all the departments needed, the new general fund revenues we took in, plus the fund balance resulted in a remaining amount that is budgeted as general fund contingency. The amount of the general fund contingency that was put in the budget, $3,890,000, is how much was budgeted when we, when it came to the Board in September. None of it has been moved at this point. In order to move contingency dollars, it requires a four-fifths vote of the Board of Supervisors. And this would be the first such request for a transfer of those contingency dollars.
Jim, just want to point out, none of this money's going into any investigations part of it. This is a contract for eradication. Once you go in and... This is a contract for eradication, once you go in and, and serve warrants or whatever you do to go to, and they remove the plants or cells.
So, it's for professional and specialized services, which is what we pay the contractor out of. We also utilize it for some overflights, so it does, so there's two separate items here. So, some of it could go towards the investigative portion, but also, it's for the removal. And I'm, I'm sorry I didn't make this point earlier, but it's why I stepped back up, and it's probably the most important point. We have cases stacked, ready to go. I cannot allow the bureaucracy of the governmental system and lack of finances to slow our investigations down. We've already expended money towards those investigations. We're looking at concluding those and making sure we have enough funding to complete the investigation and do the eradication and removal. And that's why I'm getting, trying to get here as early as possible to get ahead of this, so it doesn't compound as we move throughout the fiscal year.
I forgot about the flyover part. You're right. Okay, so that being said, it's back to the board. Do we have a motion? Further comments, questions? Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the item.
A motion by Supervisor Olivera. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Come on, guys.
Supervisor Mills. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero. Okay, it's a little bit after twelve o'clock, and most everybody in the room is here, I'm sure, for the next six, seven items, can do in planning. We are going to go to lunch. We will resume our meeting at 1:30. Okay? 1:30.